Follow me into order, please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Will we begin in second? Ms. Garza, could you please call the rule?
Yes. Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albert.
Here.
Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Seberg.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here. Thank you. He's the last one, right? Okay.
Mr. Morawski.
Here.
And Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Dr. McGorg, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes. We have personnel ratification of personnel appointments, resignations, transfers, and recommended terminations that are part of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any spotlights or announcements? Ms. Radford.
Thank you Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGorg. Good evening, members of the school board, and certainly good evening to everyone that is here with us tonight. I'm very excited about the spotlights that we have this evening, so we have several, and I would like to ask the chairman and superintendent to please join us down front. Thank you. So tonight, we'd like to begin with Round Elementary School. We want to shine the spotlight on several Round Elementary students for a recent accomplishment. As I call your names, please come forward, and then we'll tell our audience about your wonderful achievement. These students are representing Round Elementary's robotics team, and they voted on this name, the Round Raccoons. So I'm going to call you up now. Kathryn Rivera. Victoria Ingram. Carter Layden. Clover Ruth. Nicole Brotherton. Claire Phillips. Justin Ward. And Matthew Weitzel. And actually, their coaches are here, Deana Caressolo and Trish Reeves. Their principal, Mr. Scott Baldwin, if you could come forward, Mr. Baldwin, that'd be great. I want you to see their wonderful faces as we talk about this. So these students are part of the robotics team that recently competed at James Madison University in the first Lego League Hydrodynamic State Championship Tournament. So I want to share a little bit of background about how they got there. All MCPS elementary schools, their first Lego League teams competed at the regional event at Osborne Park in November. Round Elementary won first place in research and presentation and scored in the top three for all other categories. Of the 30 teams competing at the regional level, seven were selected to advance to the state level. Round was among 108 teams competing at the two-day state tournament. The teams used advanced materials to build robots that are programmed to perform specific, precise tasks. Over the course of about nine weeks, the participating teams designed, researched, built, programmed, tested, refined, and retested a fully autonomous robot capable of completing a number of very challenging missions. During the state tournament, they were judged on their core values, research project, and robot design. They also demonstrated how well their robot could perform on the competition tables. Round finished 58th out of the 108 teams at the competition, and we want to celebrate them for a job well done. All right, so let's get everybody here together for a next one. This is good. Mm-hmm. Everybody ready? Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Let's do another one. One, two, three. Congratulations, everybody. Next, we'd like to showcase our... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm missing some information here. Just a moment. I'm sorry. Just a moment. I'm sorry. All right. So now we have our Osborne High School Youth Salute winners, and I would like to recognize four of our students tonight. Each year, Osborne High School participates in the National Council on Youth Leadership Youth Salute Program. Youth Salute's mission is to applaud, encourage, and provide opportunity for the leadership development of youth. Nominations for Youth Salutes are requested during a student's junior year. The nominees must have been elected to a leadership position and had at least a B average. Students are not only nominated based upon grades, but also on their leadership activity in school, religious organizations, and in their community. Each student is asked to complete an application and answer an essay question. This year, 15 students were selected for the program. In early fall, a biographical sketch along with stunning photos of each student was displayed in the library at Osborne and various other places around the city of Manassas. Four of the students were chosen as semifinalists to attend the town hall meeting on tomorrow in St. Louis, a three-day event that brings youth leaders together from across the nation. As I call your names, please come forward. Jonathan Peters. Elizabeth Campbell. Emma Bellas. And Eva Hernandez Morales. The town meeting was held October 21st through the 24th on the campus of Washington University in St. Louis. During the conference, these students were able to enter into dialogue with proven adult leaders, broaden their horizons by interacting with youth leaders with diverse backgrounds, enhance their leadership skills with seminars by dynamic professionals and national political leaders, participate in small group experimental learning opportunities, make wonderful new friends from across the nation, and we just want to congratulate them on this wonderful accomplishment. Thank you guys so much. We're proud of you. And their principal, Mr. Joe Gabowski, is here. I'm going to ask him to come forward and join them.
And you.
Hey, Mr. Peters. Yeah, you go on up too. Okay. Everybody this way. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Have your man done?
He's done.
I'm sorry.
That wasn't nice. Congratulations, everybody. Oh, goodness. Okay, so we have an Osborne High School teacher that we'd like to recognize tonight. Ms. Tricia Callahan has been awarded the 2017 International Writing Centers Association President's Future Leader Scholarship. She is one of only four leaders nationwide who received this award. This is her first award from this organization. The International Writing Centers Association is committed to providing professional development opportunities to peer tutors at all levels. She was awarded a $250 scholarship and attended a lunch with the executive officers of the organization during the 2017 conference in Chicago, which was held in November. Under her leadership, many of you have already heard a lot about the Eagle Writing Center. It's in its third year. It has two full class periods to use for instruction and planning. The student-run center provides a non-threatening workspace where Osborne students can be paired with a trained student tutor for the purpose of improving their client's particular writing. I would like to note that additionally, just recently, last week, on Friday, December 8th, Ms. Callahan took 24 of her Writing Center tutors to the Sixth Annual Conference for Secondary Peer Tutors and Writing Center Directors. Two of her tutors, David Garcia and Javier Morales, presented research at the conference titled "High School Writing Centers: Redefining the Purpose" during one of the sessions. Ms. Callahan also presented research at the same conference, and her session was titled "An Indistinct Aspect in the Writing Center Curriculum: Reading Instruction and Strategies." She's been the website curator for the Capital Area Peer Tutoring Association for the past year, and has many accolades with the organization. Also during the transition, Ms. Callahan will take on the role of Vice President of the National Secondary School Writing Centers Association, which is a huge compliment to the work that she's done with the organization. So we certainly congratulate you on all your many accomplishments and the success of the Writing Center.
And she's a teacher.
Yes. Can you help it get this on? Sorry. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. She's been under the weather, so we were excited that she was able to be here tonight. Okay, our final spotlight for the evening. At this time, I would like to introduce Christina Frank and members of the Christine Spratley Memorial Committee for a special presentation.
Mr. Chairman and members of the school board, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Christina Frank Hughes, and I am a member of the Christine M. Spratley Memorial Committee. The other members who are here with me tonight are Ms. Annie Eck, Ms. Bay Stark, and Ms. Holly Van Metten. We're here tonight to present to you and to the school community a resolution that we passed last month memorialized...
One second, please.
Certainly.
Could you three please come up here with her?
Thank you.
What, you're going to sit there and tell me no? Do you know who you're dealing with? Well, it'll be moral up here.
There you go. Good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, certainly, no. After this works out well, could you pass this around while I...
See.
What I would like to do is to read a portion of the resolution and then share with you the rock that we have commemorated in Ms. Spratley's memorial. The resolution is, "Whereas Christine Marie Spratley was a teacher, PTA president, fine arts chair, volunteer, and advocate for the city of Manassas school system; and whereas she was a tenacious advocate for her special needs students and their families in the community; and whereas she was a caring and passionate educator who caused learning in the classroom; and whereas she regularly volunteered in several schools and PTAs when she was not teaching; and whereas Christine Spratley's passion, leadership, and work was lost to us with her passing on Wednesday, January 11th, 2017; and whereas she touched many lives in her own life's journey, and her memory continues to inspire many. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Christine Spratley Memorial Committee does hereby recognize and honor her for her years of service to the citizens of the city of Manassas and dedicates a commemorative rock to be placed near the entrance of Osborne High School in recognition of her dedication to learning and to the success of the Manassas City Public The committee has received tremendous support from the administration of the schools, as well as the principal of Osborne High School. And we have received approval to place the rock near the flag at Osborne High School, which we hope to do next week, and I believe Ms. Stark is holding the rock that we have dedicated, and as you can see in the photos, that's where we intend to place it. We'd ask her to be like Van or White and parade to the crossroad, but she wouldn't even do that, so... So that's what we would like to present tonight. We'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. She's a wonderful lady. Thank you very much for doing this.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? We appreciate the effort you put in for this.
Okay, thank you.
It's very well done.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes our spotlights for tonight.
Thank you. It's where the fun starts, people. Ms. Williams, is there any report on the academic committee?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albert, educational support.
No report, sir.
Ms. Kiefer, policy.
No report.
Mr. Albert, finance.
No report, sir. Why'd you say no?
Yes, it is. Ms. Seberg, anything on personnel?
No report.
All right. Board member comments. Mr. Anderson and two of the last ones here, we'll start with you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seberg, and members of the board. Last Friday, I attended along with Eva the Capter Conference, and it was amazing. We actually had a really great time meeting other Writing Center tutors and talking about the work we do within our Writing Centers. I got a lot of insight on what I would improve in tutoring different students, and overall it was a really good opportunity. I also have more news. So this Saturday, the OHS FBLA and Metz Mayfield SCA are participating in Reefs Across America. This is the sixth year they're doing it, and this will be their youth project. I also have information about the Chick-fil-A Leaders Academy. So each leadership class is scheduled to complete a Do Good December mini-project, which is designed to make an immediate difference. This is an opportunity to put servant leadership into action. Winter Wonderland was held this past Wednesday evening. The goal is to inspire future leaders by introducing students to team-building, creative learning, and fun. This two-hour free event, where elementary students and family were welcomed into the high school to interact with high school student leaders, was amazing. Actually, other high school students also came. Parents and students were brought together to play holiday games, make crafts, take photos, and have their faces painted. Also, there was Chick-fil-A. Students from the leadership class coordinated and led all of the stations. $168 was donated at the event, and the money will be donated to the SERV, which is a nonprofit organization in our community that helps people in need. This coming Thursday, the other class will be going to the Frog Trail Assisted Living Center to spend the afternoon making holiday ornaments and playing bingo with the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morales.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On November 16th, the day after the last school board meeting, I was fortunate to attend VS, Virginia School Board Association Conference, also known as VSPA, along with the rest of my colleague, colleagues? No, yes. I was able to observe and reflect how well-developed the Manassas School Division is compared to others overall, so I would like to lodge you guys on that. Very well done. It was a really great experience for all. I was able to take my mom, and it was very great. In addition, December 1st was a wonderful start to the holidays, with many different groups and organizations gathered at the parade. I know the school board had one, robotics also had one. I, the salute, went on a fire truck, and I thought that was very great, although it was pretty cold outside. Our hearts were warmed with the amount of kindness we had towards one another. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, everybody honored tonight, the Round Lego League, Osborne High School Youth Salute winners, and Ms. Callahan, and special thanks to the Christine Spratley Memorial Committee for all your work. Congratulations to the recent Osborne graduates. Most of us were able to make it to their graduation last week, which is just a wonderful ceremony to attend, so congratulations to those students. All the holiday concerts are ongoing at the schools. I believe there's one at Osborne tonight, and please go to as many of those as you can. They're really wonderful, wonderful events. Congratulations to Mr. Williams and Mr. Albert, who were both honored last night at the city council meeting, based on their recent achievements with the VSPA, and may everybody have a wonderful winter break that is oncoming, and spend time with your family, enjoy that time, and read to a child while you're at home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Good advice. Ms. Williams?
I just want to also congratulate everybody who has presented to us tonight. What great awards and accomplishments they have all had. I don't have any prepared comments tonight, but I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and enjoy your holidays, and stay safe. That's it. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Seberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief tonight. I just want to say good luck to the Osborne academic team as they host divisions tomorrow night. They swept their season, so it should be another victory, and then on towards regional. And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone, and just a friendly reminder, if you need gifts wrapped, you can go to the Osborne Vans wrapping booth in Manassas Mall. It's open every day now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to congratulate everyone who was honored and who recognized this evening. One of the things I did want to mention and just remind folks of is, one of the most critical jobs of this board is finding a superintendent, and as folks know, our wonderful superintendent is going to be retiring. And it is the hardest job on the planet. I'm now convinced of that in my couple of years up here and watching what she and her team go through and how hard they work. There's an opportunity for the public to be engaged in this process. There's a survey online, there are paper surveys available at central office, at schools, and there's a public hearing with the school board on January 9th. I encourage you to help us, make sure that we do our job and hear your voice in all of this, so encourage you to look for that. I also wanted to just, on a personal and special note, you know, all of my colleagues up here I cherish very much, I just wanted to say, Mr. Albert is the new president of the VSPA, and it feels like he's been president of the VSPA forever because he's always down there. He's always working hard, and I just wanted to say, congratulations. We couldn't have a better leader up there. We enjoyed celebrating you while we were down in Williamsburg. And Mr....
With Justice Kennedy.
With Justice Kennedy, that is true. And Mr. Williams. He received the VSPA Advocate for Education, and anyone who knows Mr. Williams and watches what he does behind the scenes will fully understand why he was recognized and chosen for this honor, hands down. There was no one else, again, who could have filled that position or been more worthy of such an award. So I just wanted to congratulate you and to thank you for continuing to teach me, and I look forward to your continued companionship and support and support groups, whatever we need to get through it, but we really are happy to have you both honored in that way. I also wanted to recognize, on a personal level, the woman to my left. It is her anniversary this evening. She was down in Williamsburg with us on her birthday. She was with us her last anniversary, so if there's commitment here, it's right here. So happy anniversary and happy holidays to everybody in the community. Enjoy it, be safe, stay warm, enjoy your family and friends.
Thank you, ma'am. You stole what I wanted to talk about. I usually go... I usually go last, but I'm going to go now. The wrapping booth at the mall, we got a letter from, was it the general manager of the mall? With great accolades for our students and the way they handle themselves, and that's very impressive. We got that letter, everybody should know about that, what great children we have and the great things they're doing, more than just what we see here tonight, which is pretty spectacular on its own. But everybody needs to know, our kids in the community are doing great things, and the community is noticing. What I want to talk about were these two. What Ms. Kiefer said is completely right. Mr. Williams being the Advocate for Education Award, I couldn't think of somebody better. The caring and the passion he has towards education and toward our children is unequal, and he absolutely deserved that. And the amount of time that Ms. Kiefer referred to, that you spend in Charlottesville, in Richmond, everywhere, working for the VSPA and for the region and for us, is unequal, and we appreciate it, and it's a sense of pride for all of us in Manassas that you are the VSPA president, and I swallow a little bit about it. I appreciate it so much, and we're a better board because of what you do, so we appreciate it very much. And I'm done, so now, Mr. Williams, sir.
Thank you. Well, thanks for the comments, I'd like to zoom in on that. Scott's stuff is very on point, though. He's good. He's a good dude. First of all, thanks to everyone who came out last night to City Hall, make it today again in a moment. Congratulations to all the honorees tonight. We have great kids here in the school system, and before I forget, Happy Kwanzaa. Anybody say, "Where's Kwanzaa?" Happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays if you don't celebrate any of them. Take some time, relax, and enjoy your families. Last night, when I was at City Hall, I took the opportunity, because we don't get them much, to address the folks there, and I'm just going to read my comments that I read at the work today. I'll just read what I said last night, especially for those of you who weren't there whose names I mentioned. So, here we go. Good evening, Mayor Parrish, Vice Mayor Beanie, Ms. Bass, Ms. Sebesky, Ms. Elston, Ms. Lepjoe, and Ms. Wolf. Thank you for this recognition in the public service. And thank you, Ms. Madden, Mr. Pate, for your service. I'm honored by your recognition by the VSPA Award. I would like to thank my wife, Dr. Anastasia Williams, and our children, Kiara, Sanford, and Mia, for their love and support. And I thank God and citizens of Manassas for providing me with the privilege of serving on the school board. I also want to thank my colleagues, Kristin, Tim, Scott, Peter, Suzanne, and Robin, and they all were there last night, except for one who has obligations to their family, which is understandable, unless she's there in spirit. So it's an amazing board to have everybody show up to something like that, which wasn't, you know, a big deal to me, but it was something they appreciated, so I appreciate their support. And I really thank you guys. This award is as much yours as it is mine. And then I wanted to thank Dr. McGorg, Alba, Alba, Al, and the rest of the central office staff. I was going to mention all of you, you know, but I didn't want to leave it there yet. So all of you guys who are there, who are always at all meetings, and everyone else back at central office. And I greatly thank the Manassas City staff and teachers who toll diligently for our school system. If the future of our nation and our world is a kingdom, education is the key. I believe we have a moral imperative to educate all of our students, whether they are in kindergarten or 12th grade, whether they are dreamers or they have a dream, whether they identify as straight or gay, and no matter their ethnicity or religion, our duty as public servants is to help provide them with the best education we can, which includes the tools and skills to reach their potential and to be productive and educationally agile citizens. Education is of paramount importance, and education in the U.S. and the Commonwealth is facing an impending crisis on many fronts. There has been a consistent decrease in funding nationwide, as Scott alludes to frequently, which is true, and in Virginia. Yesterday, Governor McAuliffe announced a series of budget actions to address Virginia's growing teacher shortage, and teachers nationwide who deal with problems ranging from bullying to social media increasingly feel unappreciated. This weekend, I saw a post about a Manassas Park teacher who recently told elected delegate Dana Long that the teacher felt invisible. And when I read that comment, I mean, it hurt my heart because my dad was a teacher, I've mentioned it before, for 40 years. I taught for a couple of years, well, I taught for a couple of years before she went to med school. And teachers are very important to us generally. And then, when I thought about the courage it took for that teacher to say that, I thought that was pretty cool. And then I come to find out that the teacher was an Osborne graduate, the daughter of Mr. Di Maria, who made the comment. So when I heard that, I was proud of her for speaking up and saying what she felt, but I was sad that she felt that way. And it was kind of ironic, because I had no idea. I just happened to see this, you know, online, and I mentioned it, and Tim told me later, so it was kind of coincidental, but it just goes to show you how we don't appreciate our teachers enough. As I told our Manassas City teachers at convocation earlier this year, I see them, we see them, and we appreciate them. Teachers are an integral part of the education process, and they should be supported, recognized, and appreciated. Here in Manassas, we have a steadily increasing, dynamic student population with a unique set of challenges. These challenges should not deter us. All parents, and this is something we forget sometimes, all parents want their kids to be somebody. No parent wants their kid just to not succeed or reach their potential. So when we have kids come to our school, it's incumbent upon us to address each kid because each of their parents and their families want the best for them. We can help these children. We have a plethora of talented staff and teachers and a uniquely diverse wealth of knowledge in our community. I am confident that no matter the challenges we face, we are up to the task. I firmly believe that if we as a community work together, there is nothing we can't do. And finally, if you don't know, we have some awesome kids here in our school system. Stop by and read to a class, attend a game or a play, watch the OHS band, attend a robotics competition, or listen to our choirs. The talent of our kids is breathtaking. Each of them is special, and each of them can achieve. They are truly amazing, and I feel blessed to play a small part in their education and service there. All parents, and this is something we forget sometimes, all parents want their kids to be somebody, no parents or kid just to not succeed or reach their potential. So when we have kids come to our school, it's incumbent upon us to address each kid because each of their parents and their families want that for them. We can help these children. We have a plethora of talented staff and teachers and a uniquely diverse wealth of knowledge in our community. I am confident that no matter the challenges we face, we are up to the task. I firmly believe that if we as a community work together, there is nothing we can't do. And finally, if you don't know, we have some awesome kids here in our school system. Stop by and read to a class, attend a game or a play, watch the OHS band, attend a robotics competition, or listen to our choirs. The talent of our kids is breathtaking. Each of them is special, and each of them can achieve. They are truly amazing, and I feel blessed to play a small part in their education and serve as their advocate. The future is now, let's make it ours. And then I said, thanks for your time and wonderful evening, but you don't care about that part. But anyway, main reason I wrote that very quickly during my lunch hour yesterday was that I felt it was important for me to convey to City Hall that, you know, we're thankful for being honored. What we really want is for everyone in our community to join together and help us educate all our children, because something we can do if we join together. City Council's been very helpful to us, but I think we all can do better, and if I can do anything to help push us towards that point, then I feel like I'm doing my job. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Well, Mr. President, you got to follow him last night, you get to follow him again tonight. Ms. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No one pointed out, we had the first snow of the season, and we didn't have to cancel classes. Let's just hope we can continue that trend for the rest of the academic year, or at least the calendar year. Thank you to the Osborne student leaders also for continuing their tradition with Rees across America. It's something, this will be the first year I've not participated, I've got some conflicts, but it's something I personally feel really strongly with, and I'm glad to see our student leaders actively engaged in. If you've never done it, this ceremony they have is done at the same time across the nation at many, many cemeteries, it's really pretty moving. We did yesterday meet City Council and the school board with our local legislators. We have an agenda packed, you can go to the web and read it, but you know, we can really put it down to two things, and Mr. Williams alluded to one, and that is proper and adequate funding. The Commonwealth of Virginia has a constitutional obligation to pay 50% of the cost of education, and they don't. And yes, I know that means more state taxes, folks, but anything that is passed and not paid for then is an unfunded mandate, and that's what's being passed on to localities. But aside from money, and the state and federal government not doing their fair share, we talked about the local rights of a school board, specifically a local government, to control their destiny. And that is something that doesn't cost money, and there are potentially some political maneuverings and shenanigans going on which would take away the rights of your city council or your school board when it affects either student discipline or other rights, and that again is just a big government encroachment into local government politics. So, those are some things we've talked about at the macro level. Congratulations to Mr. Williams, there is not a more deserving individual in the state for the Advocate for Education. And this is not an individual sport, this is a team sport. So the seven members we have here, we're a collective corporate body, and we are strong because we share many of those same philosophical and moral thoughts. Mr. Williams just said it's a moral imperative to, you know, to educate children, and I've talked about before, it's a moral sin to graduate students to the unemployment line. Those aren't just words, I think every member of this board believes it, and hopefully our actions follow through with those beliefs. Because the children each one of our teachers educates today is our workforce of tomorrow. So, thank you everybody for your support to your school board, and as my peers said before me, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, whatever you do in your travels, be safe because it's really crazy out there.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to citizens' comments. Is there any, I have no one signed up, is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, I don't have to read my little speech then. Consent Agenda.
Chair, move for adoption, Consent Agenda as modified.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, to accept the Consent Agenda as Modified. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. Discussion. Career and Technical Education Update. Dr. Saunders. I got that right. I was told I had to call on you.
So, good evening, Chairman Di Maria, members of the board, Dr. McGorick. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and introduce the Career and Technical Education Update. I just want to share a little bit of background about, in 2015, I think I stood before all of you and we started down this process of really looking to transform our career and technical education program. In that process, you all were asked to make some very difficult decisions. We had Mr. Hastings come and do a program evaluation of our, of our current programs, and in that, he identified four recommendations. I want to kind of bring you back to those and tell you kind of where we stand at this point, and then Susan will talk a little bit about that. The first thing that he recommended, and most importantly, and a charge from Dr. McGorick since pretty much the time I started in this role, was to engage our employers and to engage our businesses and our community in trying to find ways for our students to get real-world experiences. The second recommendation was to implement a process of ongoing program improvement. The third was to match programs to students and workforce needs. We had to make difficult decisions, we closed programs, and we reopened programs that were really matching the current workforce. And finally, the recommendation was to identify division and building-level dedicated CTE staff. And I can stand here today and say we are working on every one of those, some we have completed. The transformation in career and technical education in the school system has been amazing over the years. As you listen to some of the things we even heard tonight, our Round Robotics, our Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy, our youth salute students, all getting pieces of those experiences through their career and technical education classes. As we've said from the beginning, career and technical education is for all of our students, it fits into our former strategic plan and in our current strategic plan where we are to graduate college and/or career-ready students. So as Susan, Ms. McNamara speaks to you tonight, I have to say, we could not have found better people to lead our career and technical education program. Every day, I am thankful that Ms. McNamara and Mr. Steiner are out there because they work every single day for the students in Manassas City Public Schools. They look for every opportunity they can find, you will see them at every chamber event, you will see them at every community event, you will see them finding ways to engage our students. And so, I'm so proud that they're part of our team and so thankful that the board supported those roles and those positions because it's making a difference in our students and what they get to do each and every day in their experience here in the city. So with that, I'm going to introduce Susan, and she has a fabulous presentation for you, you're going to enjoy it, I can guarantee it.
Good evening, Chairman Di Maria, Manassas City School Board, and Dr. McGorick. It is our pleasure to be here tonight to give you an update on career and technical education in Manassas City Public Schools. My name is Susan McNamara, Supervisor of K-12 Career and Technical Education. Mr. Paul Steiner, CTE Administrator at Osborne High School is present as well. This slide represents the current status of new programs currently in place in career and technical education at Osborne High School. We began course offerings in the following career and technical education classes. Emergency Medical Technician 1, Principles of Engineering, Civil Engineering and Architecture, and Digital Electronics Engineering, all Project Lead the Way classes. Additionally, we added Programming and Coding classes and Computer Systems Technology. Commercial Photography 2 was added. In our Trades area, Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning, and Refrigeration was added as well. Lastly, we received our designation as a Governor's STEM Academy at Osborne High School. This slide indicates our enrollment for these new program courses. Currently, there are 36 students in the Emergency Medical Technician classes. There are 110 students in the Engineering classes. There are 115 students in the Cybersecurity Coding and Programming classes. There are 26 students enrolled in Commercial Photography 2, and there are 34 students in our Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning, and Refrigeration classes. Our progress continues since receiving our Governor's STEM Academy distinction this past July. Here are the steps moving forward. Applications for the Academy have been received. Evaluation of the student applications are in progress. Students will be notified of acceptance in the Governor's STEM Academy at Osborne High School early January 2018. Lastly, an induction and penning ceremony will take place at the end of January 18, uh, January 2018. Continuing on our career and technical education-developed course plan, we intend to increase the integration of design, rapid prototyping, and automation at Metz Middle School. This improves and increases alignment with Osborne High School programs. Emergency Medical Technician 2 will be offered at Osborne High School. Lastly, Engineering Design and Development, the Capstone Course for Project Lead the Way Course will be offered. This Capstone Course completes the engineering pathway for all engineering students. Now I'm going to have Paul speak for a little bit, too.
In the spring of 2018, we intend to promote career and technical education by engaging division learners during Career and Technical Education Month, February 2018. In April of 2018, we plan to focus on financial literacy by having events take place during these nationally-recognized career and technical education months, to expose all students to career and technical education and topics and exploration of possible career pathways through career and technical education instructional areas. In the past year, many teachers in CTE experienced content-relevant professional development to their instructional areas. Some of these experiences took place this past summer, and some of them have taken place during this fall. We recognize the importance of our teachers having relevant and timely professional development opportunities for the betterment of instruction for our students. New programs have been started to engage students with our local workforce. Donuts with Engineers and Trades have afforded many students the opportunity to dialogue with those who work in their respective professions, in a welcoming casual environment where question and answer sessions take place. Students made inquiries regarding typical work environments, necessary education, industry changes and trends, collaborative projects, and other topics not found in a typical classroom setting. Businesses have many, have had many positive comments and look forward to oncoming events in the spring. To create more opportunities for our students, we have a social media platform for which we proudly share our students' work and events. We wish to increase our following and launch in the larger venues where best practices are shared. We intend to learn from other programs with the ultimate goal of providing the best possibilities to our students possible. As part of our ongoing efforts to connect with businesses, excuse me, as part of our ongoing effort to connect businesses with students in Manassas City Public Schools, we're happy to report that we have joined together with Center Fuse and Impacto Youth to support learning experiences for entrepreneurship classes. Students will be connected with professionals who have started their own companies or entrepreneurs. A Capstone Men's Session will take place where students will pitch their business concept to professionals as if they were working toward their own startup company, identifying the product concept competitors, competitor of theirs, advertising, and marketing. I'm gonna send this back to Susan.
Thank you.
Recognizing the value in partnerships, we wanted to share comments from business representatives who have worked with our students in one capacity or another for the benefit of student learning. Dr. Andrew Kostic, Senior Engineer at the Aerospace Corporation, was unable to join us this evening, but shares these comments we received from his experience with Donuts for Engineers. It was a pleasure and honor to participate in Donuts with an Engineer. The students seemed to enjoy the interaction. Please let me know if I can assist in future events. At this moment, I would like to introduce Mrs. Caroline Shabber with Impacto Youth, and she will share information on our partnership for student learning.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. McGorick, and Manassas City School Board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to represent Impacto Youth and also the Center Fuse Co-Working Space Downtown. We started this program, the partnership with the CTE program in Manassas City Schools, and I have to tell you, it's been nothing but a pleasure to work with every student and every staff member that we've come into contact with, so I, you can be very, very proud of everybody that's around. So really, we started this out, our initiative was to bring students into that real-world environment that you just spoke about, and I tell you, they didn't tell me that, but we're really connecting with that real-world experience with the students. They came to Center Fuse yesterday, we had 60 students come in, we had two sessions because we wanted to make sure that we could really facilitate the kids, they walked up, and it was wonderful. Yesterday was the Intro to Business, let's get this rolling, and the kids, they all came in with eyes this big, and we got them warmed up, and they were okay after a while. But they're going to follow on, and they're going to come back to the Center Fuse for those nine weeks, and at the end, we want them to have a viable business plan and a truly, a real-world idea of what it's going to take to run a business, be an entrepreneur, or have, go to college, or not go to college, get into the workforce, where do they want to go. And so, we reached out to a lot of different speakers that are going to come in, in the areas of business finance, law, marketing, we have some top-notch people that we've reached out to in the local community as well, and everybody has said absolutely, Osborne High School, we're there. So we're super excited to have this, we hope this is something that we can continue on with at some, at a later date as well, and really get all of these students through the Center Fuse. They really enjoyed that, kind of, they were asking, what happens here in this co-working space as a business? This is what happens here, you know, so we were explaining the Center Fuse to them, and they all seemed incredibly engaged and very, very interested in what was going on. So we truly believe that this partnership with Manassas City Schools and Impacto Youth is something that's really going to mold even more so the vision of what you're doing with your CTE Division. And I think it's just, it's just been a great opportunity, that's something that we are very, very passionate about, creating opportunity for students and helping them guide, guide their future, and if they get one nugget from this nine-week session, then we've done our job. So, thank you very much.
Lastly this evening, Student Testimonial is our best indication of how career and technical education is a powerful instructional, is powerful instruction that prepares our students for the workforce and for college. I'd like to introduce Mr. Christopher McCormick, Senior in Career and Technical Education at Osborne High School.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. McGorick, everybody else on the board, Heather, Ethan, thank you for having me. Hello, my name is Christopher McCormick, I am a senior at Osborne High School, and I have been involved in CTE classes since I was a freshman. I've taken classes such as Intro to Engineering, Principles of Engineering, Architecture 1, which are all Project Lead the Way classes. I've taken Graphics 1, and this year I'm currently in a course that's centered around cybersecurity. And all of these classes have given me the information and skills which I hope to use to pursue and further my education to become a computer engineer. And the CTE program gives students like me many opportunities to prepare for the workplace and a college career. They give students the chance to get certifications in whichever class they, that you are involved in. Examples would be being certified in Inventors, being certified in AutoCAD, which students who really, students who even don't want to further education in college, those certifications can really help you just going straight out to the workforce. Also, in the recent, like, in previous years, the CTE department held mock interviews to where we had businesses come out and stage interviews with some students where, like, I know some students, they save off going into the workforce until after they graduate, which to me is weird, but not important. But for them, it can really help them with the interview, because a lot of students, they come out of high school and they don't know how to act during an interview, they don't know how to dress, how to, how you should present yourself, that can really put them ahead of other people who are like them. And like we, Mr. Steiner touched on, we have the Donuts with Engineers Day, which, like he had already touched upon, the real working engineers come out, and you can have like a sit-down and meet and greet with the students, and me along with other students got a chance to ask our questions to working engineers in our field, in their field, such as aerospace engineers, computer, computer engineers, software engineers, which, me wanting to be a computer engineer, it was really cool, being able to ask them my questions. And from firsthand experience, I can say that the knowledge and information given to me by the engineers at the breakfast was an enhanced viewpoint and has provided a lot of benefits that a normal classroom could not. And I'd just like to say that I'm very appreciative of that, and the opportunities to actually meet with them. Another thing I really love about the CTE classes in themselves are the teachers. The teaching methods are like no other, and we apply knowledge and skills learned in the class in hands-on activities. And in most of the engineering courses I've taken throughout my years at Osborne, it's hands-on activities all year round, which actually help train the students, and it trains them to take the certification test at the end of the year, that's why with a lot of these classes- That's why with a lot of these classes, you see the majority of the students leaving the room with a certification at the end of the year. And also, from like, being in the classroom, I also really enjoy the teachers that we have. I've had Mr. Schmicki, a former teacher, Ms. Steiner, and even Mr. Frederick.
Even him?
Yeah, even him. And I can tell just by being in the classroom, you can really get a feeling that the teachers really love what they're teaching. They're really into it, they make the classrooms exciting and fun to be in. And not only that, they don't only care deeply about their subject, but they also really care about training our students for our future. And just for a final note, I'd like to also state, again, I'm very thankful for finding out about the CTE classes my freshman year. I've enjoyed all the classes I'm in and I've enjoyed all the teachers I've met along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm not really sure why you guys even showed up. Thank you, Mr. McGorick.
Building relationships and growing opportunities for our students is key to moving forward and helping Manassas City Public Schools to bridge the skills gap. Our Chamber of Commerce strongly supports and values the connection of career and technical education, students, excuse me, values the, strongly supports and values the connection of career and technical education students working with and alongside businesses. A recent press release in November 2017 directs businesses to our endeavors and encourages connections for students and work-based learning opportunities with businesses. Inside NOVA featured an article on November 19th, 2017 regarding this partnership as well. This is an example of the press release. As members of the Education and Innovation Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, we work closely to develop the pilot program to have the Chamber of Commerce registered businesses connect with Manassas City Public Schools. We are the first school division to have this connection with the Chamber of Commerce. Over a year of planning took place to get us positioned for businesses to connect via the Chamber's website to our landing page. Our landing page for work-based learning opportunities is linked to the Chamber's press release and is found on Osborne High School's CTE Department listing. We seek to continue our relationships with local businesses to provide many work-based learning opportunities for our students. And lastly, we would like to end with a presentation that we have put together in about the last five weeks. We thank you for the opportunity to update the Manassas City School Board on what is occurring in current technical education within the division. We look forward to updating the Manassas City School Board, Superintendent, and the entire division's students and families on the exciting programs and innovative voice moving forward with Manassas City Public Schools. And without further ado, we'd like to show you this production.
Career and Technical Education is the instructional area where students have the opportunity to take the skills that they've learned in the classroom and apply them to the workforce. We have a very robust program in Hospitalology, Auto Construction, Commercial Photography, with Criminal Justice Program, Leadership Program, Project Lead the Way classes, in charge of the Sony Engineering Campus, HVAC, and Business and Information Technology.
Students will be able to achieve college credit going through this program and one of the things that I think really stands out, I think will be helpful for parents to understand, is that students can now actually potentially leave our school with an associate's degree.
One of the things that we work on and try to develop our partners in the business community who can set an advisory capacity for us in the four types of course offerings that we should be addressing to help fulfill our employment gap. We look for partners who can help us with job shadowing incidences, internships, paid internships, apprenticeships. So the capacity for us to grow and be able to work with other business partners is critically essential to what we're doing in career and technical education.
It is meaningful that we will reflect with work with the doors and lock the doors. Like as far as what, not just what, it's the opportunity to follow Metz and Florida as well. I realize that many people need those steps before they know who to work with. So I decided to bring my professionalism and my offerings to the student level.
Manassas City Public Schools and Osborne High School most recently earned the Governor's STEM Academy designation through the Virginia Department of Education. This allows students the special opportunity to take coursework through three specific pathways that we have in the academy and earn special diploma certifications when they graduate. There are 23 Governor's STEM Academies in the state of Virginia and we are one of those.
The more value they have, the higher the level, what they think they want to do, and the value of the knowledge, the abilities, the hard companies, the better they are to be here to come into the workforce.
Scholars do need skills as well and that's what career and technical education does to help bridge that gap.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This has been very enlightening and very gratifying to see the work that's being done. And to have Christopher come forward and testify to what he's been through for the last four years has been very rewarding for all of us. Anyone else?
You mentioned the NVTC. Do you have any success working with them? Do you help? I might know a few members on it.
So, right now, as part of the Northern Virginia Technology Council and starting to go through the meetings with them, I just recently attended a cyber summit that they did in the last 30 days. In addition to that, part of what we're doing is working with Northern Virginia Community Colleges, AFID Initiative, Assisting Females in Technology, which is an initiative aimed at an underserved population in that particular area. Next year, it will be males in nursing. But with that being said, there are five Northern Virginia Community College campuses that are going to participate in the AFID Initiative. And we're asking Northern Virginia Technology Council to be a part of this endeavor and we're seeking speakers at all five of the campuses. I am working directly with the Manassas campus, but they are very helpful in this process in launching this. And that will be taking place in March, some more to come.
Anyone else?
Thanks for the great presentation and the hard to maintain that. Please I think that in parallel with this, I said, we have a great opportunity. Thank you all for being awesome for our community.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for making us look good. That's what we're going to deal with you from now on, even you.
Okay. Action agent, is that where we are? Okay, the MOU, this is a joint collaboration between the city and the schools, this committee together and the chairman of that committee, believe it or not, is Mr. Albrecht. Mrs. Williams is also on that committee with us, with him, and they've been working with the city to come up with what Mr. Albrecht's going to talk about tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You want a motion, you want a presentation?
Yes, I might want to review the motion first.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the memorandum of understanding between the city council and the Manassas City School Board with a joint planning committee as presented.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Sir.
So, we've had several meetings back and forth, joint meeting, and several of the members of the board have participated or attended, I think, one or all of them. This is really about what's right for the citizens of Manassas. Some of it is codifying things that lead to today, or that the city does today. Some pretty simple, like plowing our parking lots. Well, we all kind of know that, but the reality is, as we've grown and have gone from a handshake-based system and new people coming in, it's like, well, why do we do that? Other things are, what should we be doing in the future? We have a lot of public-use buildings, whether it is gymnasiums or libraries or whatever else it might be. And how could the community use these and what makes sense going forward? Are there things that could be done weekends, off-hours, other kind of purposes? Because really, both the council and the board are looking at this from what's best for the citizens of Manassas. You know, we have, the majority of our schools are a holding place, what used to be once every couple of years and is turning into like several times a year. But, again, it's a good public-use facility, it's what we do, there's an operational impact and we all kind of, one, it's codifying, but also how do we go forward? And the single biggest thing we're talking about there is Jenny Dean and the replacement of Dean Elementary School. The school owns land there, the city owns land there, what makes sense? How would we do it? What we don't want to do, we don't want to operate in vacuums, we don't want to operate in stovepipes, we need to work together to try to figure out what's best.
Mrs. Williams?
Exactly.
But this MOU does not deal with Dean yet.
That's correct.
That's what the committee is dealing with. This is just, as your word, I wouldn't use it, but to codify what we've been doing for 40 years and getting it on paper. So in case our superintendent retires or something like that, or Mr. Hawkins decides he doesn't want to work with us any longer or whatever, which you're not allowed to do. But that's written down and we don't have to do it like we've done in the past when everybody just sits around and decides what we're going to do. Any questions on this? I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the memorandum of understanding between the city council and the school board of the city of Manassas to the joint planning committee. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven, zero. And we are up to a closed session, I believe, is that correct? I get a motion to close session.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board, the city of Manassas, enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 3711, Part 8, Paragraph A of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purpose. Part 8, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matters, PERS 1718-0254 and 0268.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board, the city of Manassas, enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part 8, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purpose. Discussion of Personnel Matters, PERS 1718-0254 and -0268. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry seven, zero.